Yeah.
Hey, you have this person's number.
All right, we uh live Scott. All right, it is nine oh one and I will call this workshop together. We do have a forum of commissioners, I believe.
Commissioner. He'll be here, it's gonna be a little late. Yeah, Doc.
Okay. Uh, do we have any public comments? If not, we will move on to uh item number three, discuss salaries and salary structures and I will turn this over to Commissioner Barton who called this meeting.
Okay, uh, I call this meeting because I've only been here four months, but as soon as I could say uh, it's a popular subject with salaries and um everybody's got the same, same philosophy and I figured instead of five of us trying to figure out salaries when budget comes in July or August, we could all just get together in here and figure out what we want to do, how we can do it and get your opinions um on not only the elected officials and salaries, but mainly your employees' salaries also. And also, uh, I don't think we'll get into the days, we don't have time, but um a change into like cough time, vacation days and I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff to go over that we need to go over before the budget season and uh, I hope, I think I've asked most of y'all, I hope I didn't get everybody, but uh, to do y'all's homework where you got like counties um salaries to compare to y'all's job and uh, I still do that, I hope y'all did that and of course, we're not Kaufman County, so that wasn't one of them, but uh, I guess we can just start from there on, you know, if you look at this worksheet, on the very first page, this is what we're dealing with, if you look at all those counties, every single county brings in more income than Van Zandt except for Rains and they're a quarter of our size. So, I don't, we don't know what the numbers are for this year, but this is what the numbers were last year. And so you can tell how far, not only as employees were behind, but as a county, how far we're behind. And then you go over the next page and uh, there is your, I, I took the similar counties that were fifty to ninety-nine thousand, which is what Van Zandt is in. And I took the high, the four high and the four low salaries out of these positions. And uh, this was the median salary that was come, that came up with compared to what our salaries are. And you can tell that we're all in on every one of them except for one, the four low of Van Zandt County was scratched out. And the only one that wasn't was the constable and you can see there that they have the, they were the lowest difference. There should be a page in here. I don't see it. There should be a page in here on tax rates. Don't see that though. I'll get it here in a minute, but with the tax rates, I, I, I got them memorized. Van Zandt County was forty-four cents, Kaufman County was.
First page.
Oh, yeah, the first page. If you look at our tax rate, which is forty-four cents compared to everybody else besides Henderson and Kaufman and Smith, which are all bigger than us, we're the lowest tax rate. And um, that's when we have the lowest income. But I want to go over with, you know, some ideas of what y'all think y'all's salaries should be, how we should structure it and just your opinions on it and we'll just go from there. So, I guess we can just start at what it says right here, the, the county judge. You know, the median salary is seventy-three, two hundred and thirty-two and we're at sixty, we're a difference of twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. In my opinion, is, like I said, we didn't know what the numbers were or are, but if we just took half of that number right there and made that a salary, if we could do that, I think that would be a start. At least give us a baseline to go forward from, from now. Uh, but I'm open to any kind of suggestions and what y'all think and we can hash it out and maybe get some figured out so we're not always having this problem. Yep.
All the money that we have in our accounts, they have to get it back to the county. Do y'all consider that revenue or y'all just taking revenue that's going to come from the uh.
Uh, all the revenue from everywhere that comes into the county is considered as part of the revenue of the county.
This will here. I didn't know.
We have, we. I try to be humorous and I realize I can't do that in public, so uh, yes, it's all shown there.
I just know that if that was, I took that into consideration because, I mean, I know we need to vote or get it back and then that will arise in the office, well, I get that. So, I just didn't know.
Yes, all, all the revenue that is generated from the county, from every department, even the uh collections department at the precinct Barnes is shown as revenue for the uh, in, in our budget. Anticipated revenue. For the total, so.
And I, one reason this is important, not, not just for the elected officials because they're elected, but for your employees, we, we, we need to do something to get this right because how much mu- how much more money are we spending on training and turnover? Where we can't keep the people, it's costing us more to hire somebody, they let go, we get nothing done, we spent the money and then we're doing it, we're just, it's a constant roller coaster. So, and that, that's another reason that uh we want to have this, but we'll get to the employees after we get y'all's opinions on, on these salaries and I've already told you my opinion uh on there, I don't know if y'all have any different ones or that sounds fair or.
What was your proposal? I'm sorry.
My proposal without seeing the number is you take half the number of the difference for right now. Like say for you, Judge, uh thirteen, so you're talking about sixty-five hundred dollar rates. Now, this doesn't include, because I know uh, I thought I saw Pat Jordan here, oh, there he is. With the constable. This doesn't include, and you mentioned this, your certificate pay. Because there, there's, there's counties in here, they have a salary and they have that certificate pay. This is based on salary alone and I believe the constable uh is the only elected official that that would, would entail with, so. But uh, so that number would be higher, but for right now, we're just working on just the salary alone. And then we'll get into that certificate pay when we can get this figured out, if we can. So, but uh, I didn't add it up, if you took, if you took half of that number right there, I want to say it was like, I'm not even gonna say it because I don't remember. If you took half that number for everybody, I can't remember what the total was, but uh, the money is there to do it. Just based off of what.
The money is where?
With, the money is in the, the county has the money to, to do that, if we budget it right and manage it right, the money is there.
Okay, uh. I don't know what you mean by there, you mean by what's in the.
There, there, there is enough revenue with that sixteen million dollars from last year that we got, that the county received. That is enough money to do that on the elected officials.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Okay.
So, are, are you proposing that uh, on the difference that we just split that and go half?
For now.
For, for right now, in other words, uh, the constables might get a two thousand thirty-three dollars and fifty cent raise.
But then you've got it, then after that, you go look at their certificate pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm proposing. Uh, I'm just trying to get a baseline to get somewhere started instead of, just we're all over the board. If we just get a baseline for this year and that will give us something to work with and then we kind of can go forward in the years um ahead of us. But we, we have to get, I mean, we're, we're so far behind just everybody. Uh, that, that we need to get even with them. And this wouldn't give us even, we'd still be in the bottom fifty percent. But we'd be closer. It's a start, I guess, is the, what I'm trying to say.
Is that going with the one to do the salary structure? It's, I mean, so, you know, in a way, like, I mean, you have a lot of officials paying here or wherever. To go back, I mean, you start by the salary structure, you have like an official committing a certain amount and then whoever's in there bonds the ladder, but then during elections come around, I'm just asking if it's something that could be done, it goes back to what the actual salary structure started at?
Well, no, the, when we, when we impose that salary structure, I think in two thousand eight, uh, that didn't include elected officials. That was just employees. However, you know, you, you can't really, uh, an elected official has a set salary. Uh, even if you're there like you twenty years, you've got that salary you deal with right now and, and when you retire and somebody wins, is elected, they're gonna get the same salary. You, you just can't break down elected official salaries, you know, and elected. Yeah, yeah, that, that was, you know, our, we went, you remember we hired the guy out of a uh, uh Austin County and he come up here for five thousand dollars, he did the whole structure deal and then we didn't have enough money to do it. But, I mean, to implement the, the plan.
But is that a law or is that just, is it a law that says that all individuals have to make the same or could there be a, I, or this elected official and then every four years he goes up on gaming this life? That's not a law, yeah. Okay.
No, it's. I mean, yeah, I mean, you wouldn't, wouldn't want to, uh, if, if, if someone is elected, you wouldn't like, when I, let's say that I retire at my present salary and somebody wins uh this position and starts out at a lower salary than these guys here, would that be fair and you know?
Yeah, I got, I got same experience.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
But, but, and I think, I understand, uh, elected official isn't elected official. So, the, the salary would be, I don't know another county that, that, I mean, you know, that, that has longevity pay for, I hear you.
Yeah.
Uh, for, for elected officials.
But that's the only way you're gonna address the uh, uh experienced employees that have been here, it's longevity pay.
Longevity.
That's the only way that you're gonna be able to reward them for their time here, so.
And I do have that. For non-elected officials, we, we do have to get longevity pay, but it's in here, but.
For non-elected officials of ours.
Yeah, for non-elected officials, we, we have to get longevity pay. I mean, that's ridiculous having somebody work here thirty years and somebody come here one day and making the same, that's crazy.
Well, that, that was what the salary structure was all about and uh, back in two thousand eight and we did implement that, but there was never any money to make it work, you know, there was never any money to make, to make it work and it just, over time, it would, by the way. I, I still have that plan, I think Jessica probably does too, somewhere down there in her office.
Yeah, one of my offices.
Yeah, yeah, I still have, I have it stacked away in, in my file, yeah.
So, does anybody have any other opinion, other than mine on that?
Well, I did, I want to talk to you on one thing, right? And I'm not just talking about FEDB, but so, so, you know, we're preparing county to the same population that we have, right? But when you get into the all enforcement side and the court side, uh, it makes a big difference. One, you have to run through your county and so, you know, we compare, just because we had the same number of people, these counts. Uh, you know, we have, I don't even want to write, some of them don't have that. So, so the work of law on courts and law enforcement might be a lot higher than those guys. Just, you know, we, we call, when we get into the employees, we can call it the same ones that got it for the subdivision, we'll get first. And so it's counting the same number of people we have, have four courts and they're jacking board, you know, we have one. And I don't ask people for courts, I'm just saying that some of these courts are a lot easier than others. Like for example, if you look at Anderson County, it compares very well to us population. But they have one house, they deserve a big city, so a lot of them people will get it in house state. Which means, which means the municipal boards deal with a lot of the wrongs, you know? And the, and the JV force in Anderson County might be real small, very, very, very more than we are, you know?
I think Anderson County had four sec- four commissioner secretaries, each commissioner had a secretary.
And so it's just, that's just really hard to compare, uh, because you might be, you know, you might have a law enforcement agency that uh, you know, because I have one, it might be a lot busier than another one in Lake County. And so I know that you gotta find some way to compare, but I would say okay, so much on the population. When you build your number, let me consider the fact that our courts and our sheriff's office are pretty busy uh and the constables because of I twenty coming new year and a lot of all this and we don't have any big cities, I mean, I guess the county is our biggest city, a lot, a lot of ours goes cool, you know?
So. So we, we had to go by that, but you look at it right here and you're right, Scott, but Smith County and Kaufman County is who we're surrounded by. Smith County brings in forty-five million, Kaufman County brings in thirty-seven million. They bring in twenty and thirty million dollars more than we do. We can't compete with them. And that's why we have to shrink it down, I mean, I know, but uh, they have, I guess, the same amount of traffic as we do. But we just can't look at them, we have to go with, I mean, everybody is different, everybody has it structured differently. We have to get with similar counties, even though we may have more traffic than these people, we gotta, you, you gotta keep it in with, within that because you can't compete with, like I said, Smith and Kaufman, which their traffic comes right through here, but there's nothing we can do about that. We, we just don't have the revenue.
And I feel like as a county clerk, I mean, I'm doing elections, I'm doing felonies. I mean, I don't know of any other clerk, county clerks that are doing that and they're just going more to the county clerk. Work is gonna be getting all of the um, uh, from the JP's offices, I think it's going to be all your um, I saw the bill on it, I don't know that it's yet, but we're gonna be handling all of the uh eviction notices, you know, all of that information, all of that. It's fixing to be all handled through the county clerk's office. Well, usually we'll get one here, one there, you know, maybe one a month. We're fixing to handle all of them, that's four different JP's offices. That's gonna be a lot, we're probably gonna need more clerks just to handle that part of, I don't know, I mean, you know, each one of them do, but I can tell you it's gonna be a lot and there's a lot of paperwork that goes into that.
But I think that's one thing we're gonna consider, like we were talking with that and, and with all these subdivisions coming in. And I've said it with, with Virgil and, and everybody, we're not qualified for all these subdivisions coming in, I mean, we, we need help with it.
Into our office and, you know, I don't, my employees do not know, you know, unless y'all are signing on on stuff, you know, we come to court and uh, you know, this one here doesn't have to pay the last seven fifty or the five hundred or the two fifty. I mean, it's chaotic when they get them in, into our office.
Well, I think we're gonna talk about trying to get it where it's simplified during budget season, because I mean, we need help with that because there's a lot of them coming in. And I don't, not sound stupid, but I, we're not, we're not qualified to do all those.
Was just so much at one time is what it is.
Yeah.
But right when I knew it was coming, because we, we've been working on that for a while, even before I was in the county clerk's office.
We'll go on to that.
Address that in.
In budget.
We're gonna address that in our budget, so.
So, all right, this is good with salaries, we'll stay there, we'll worry about that in a month or so, but uh, if y'all, I mean, that, that's what I want to do with the elected officials, now the, the, the hour employees will be a bit more complicated, but if you, I mean, I just, if y'all have any more suggestions on that, I'd like to hear them, if not, I think we can just agree or disagree to do it and, or uh, think about it and then move on with the elected officials.
Or just send half these figures or just like give everybody a lot of that round off?
No. No, like, I guess for you, you know, yours is, what is that, sixty-seven hundred or so? Uh, I mean, whatever, these are the true numbers, I mean, I'm not being biased towards, these are the true numbers. It is what it is.
See, it would be. I think uh, what, what you're saying about the district clerk, her salary would be half of thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Right, just, you just take that, the, the diff- the number that's in that difference column, take half of that number and add it to the Van Zandt salary. That is my proposal. And you know, is it fair for everybody? Well, how come this person's making this and I'm making this and I do this, blah, blah, blah? You know, I can't help it, I'm just, this is what I got, this is the fair numbers and it is what it is. And I didn't look, I mean, it doesn't matter who it is, this is what it is. I mean, I think that's the fairest way you can do it.
And and you base these figures to uh, on the the uh, Texas Association of County.
Yeah, I, uh, the paper's in here, like, I just turned to the constable's paper. There it is, from Anderson County to Wise County, so you got the four lows and the four high, took every one of those numbers, divided by sixteen and that's the number I got. Now, every, each position is different counties because there may be different four highs and four lows for different spots, but Van Zandt County was no low in every one of them except for one.
Say that again, Van Zandt County was what?
Van Zandt County was, I took out the four high and the four low and on every one of them but the constable, Van Zandt County scratched out because it was a low. So, we're underpaid on every single position we have. So, that's how I came with it and that's my suggestion and.
I think it's a start. I mean, the commissioners, y'all, I'll agree to that and yeah, of course, you can break it down to, you know, if a commissioner is standing alone or third road and bridge or how many courts a park has, but I mean, I think that again, we need to get up so that we're not losing good, good students people. But you gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to break down, I mean, I'll, I'll, I mean, I did all reports and ask how many books they had, how many uh, courts they have. I mean, that doesn't make a big difference.
I mean, we're not gonna make it perfect. I mean, it's not gonna be perfect, but I know this is my first year here, it seems like, well, we're gonna give, we're gonna give five thousand dollar raises, you know, we're just, okay, five thousand dollar raises. Let's get a baseline of what we're actually doing with the positions and then go from there. And then next year, uh, if you have inflation or whatever, I mean, then you come and adjust it, but it's not gonna be adjusted this much, but we've got to get up to that point to, to get a start. So, this is just the baseline of getting, giving us like, I guess, a formula of, of what we're doing and it all depends on, you know, we may have a four, uh, four million or more dollars next year, we don't know, I mean, it all depends on that too. But I mean, I, I can't remember what it was, but I, I, I know the money is there if we go with half, but what we even got last year, it's there. Now, we may have to manage it, you probably, no, we, we will have to manage and budget a little bit better, but the money is there.
The, the money is, is actually in the general fund. We, we'd have to, we'd have to go into the general fund to make all this happen, I believe, that something might have to be discussed in, in budget. Uh, and then it's gonna depend on uh, our, our tax rate, we don't even know yet, uh, the appraisal district has not sent us any information on what, no new tax rate would be.
We'll be back in June.
So, that's August, we're gonna have to wait and, and see, see what they send us.
And that, we got that working against us, because at that meeting, I don't know if everybody went to it, people from this county not even, were talking, don't know what they're talking about, I mean, about the tax rates when we got one of the lowest tax rates around. So, I mean, uh, we are, we're responsible, we are, we are responsible for the tax rate and we are responsible for property taxes, but so is that appraisal district. And they don't want to take our responsibility on it, but they are responsible, but the proof's right there, we are one of the lowest tax rates around besides Smith, Kaufman and Henderson. But we're not those counties, they're way bigger than us, so they're gonna be lower.
Commissioner Barton, in the study, you found out which one of the collecting sales paid for property tax relief?
No, I didn't go still, no, I didn't get that deep into, this is just the property tax, now this, this does include if they have a bond or uh, you know, they voted for something, um, that does include that, it's, it's M and O plus if they had something else.
It's your total tax.
Yeah, where ours is, you know, the M and O is thirty-four and the RV's ten, that's how you use forty-four. Uh, so, you know, they may have that too, I didn't break it down like that, this is their tax rate.
I'm not sure if man and cop have a sales tax, they're maybe part of why they're so much lower. Maybe all said and probably.
Well, they got more infrastructure.
Yeah, they got more infrastructure to the in- industry.
They don't, they don't have to be as high as, you know, they, 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 they got everything. But, I mean, we're gonna have to do something because, I mean, just take the sheriff's department, how, how, how far behind are we there? And then it, that's just where it starts, then you go to all these other departments, they're losing people left and right and having to re-train them and we're falling so far behind that uh, we, we're gonna have to make a change and, and get it right. So, we're, we're functioning properly. But we're done with that, we can move on to the, to the uh, employees, the non-elected officials, if y'all don't have any other suggestions on, on that. Anyone? Anyone? Bueller?
Your employees now?
If everybody. If everybody, you know, seems to agree with what we've talked about, yeah, I think we just need to move on.
I'll go first, my boys.
Okay.
All right, so, so we call the state counties that you use for river and I've got the full high profile. We leave out our caller and so forth. Uh, I haven't, I have a chief clerk that never comes up here and uh anyway, they're deleting salary to forty-four thousand for the chief clerk on this county. They, you know, I showed you what's up on my account. I probably might have, plenty of twenty-eight. So, that's that lovely hard on that. And then the deputy cars have been there accounting for thirty-four thousand uh very even, so, you know, we're fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars below.
What what does yours make, Scott? That's kind of important.
Thirty-two. Thirty-two, eight seventy-one.
The median chief clerk makes forty-four, but we don't know if that's the first year chief clerk there or twenty-year chief clerk there. All right, so I do know that mine's been there twenty-five years at least, and she's making uh thirty-two. She, and so, I mean, but she is so valuable in this county. I don't think, yeah, well, so did JP, so they attached her car last year, so. Which part they calling every day? Did you do my part? Because the she's been there, yeah, and they they call her that. Anyway, if I own her, JP four will be crippled for a long time. I'm telling you, like, how very important that she pay, that won't be paid. So, so my my argument is that we have to get not only give her a raise, we have to keep on paying. It's not fair for our new clerk to come in day one to make the exact same that she makes twenty-eight years.
Well, let let's do this, let's do with the salaries first. Longevity pay, because it's gonna affect everybody with with longevity. So, let's just do the salaries for right now for what they make, and then after that, we can go into longevity.
Okay, so he's, he's in thirty-two, forty-four is the median, so.
Do you just have, you just have a chief? You just?
I have a chief in a part, I'm in part-time.
You have chief in a part-time?
Yeah, and we didn't do part-time, but he, you know, I'm gonna tell you how bad it is. On my part-time help, I I can only give her, give her the raise to keep her, to keep her remaining the same rate at my full time. That's that's how I had it. So, like, I think I made twelve dollars on my part-time, and I had to go over, I could go but when I do that, I only get a couple of dollars away from my chief clerk that's been there twenty, twenty-five years, so I had to not give her any raise in my part-time. So, the paper thing was the same.
And what's your chief make?
One thirty-two.
How long's she been there?
Over twenty-five years.
So, if you did the same formula as we do on the elected officials, which it would be uh yeah, about sixty-five hundred. So.
She she needs that. Now, if she was a part-time clerk, I don't think I'd propose that to her. You know, and maybe that's where you find your longevity, isn't it?
Yeah, find your longevity. But, I mean, I don't have, this is where we all need to come together and figure something out because everybody's gonna be different. Like, for you, Scott, half of that sixty-five hundred dollars. We want to use that same formula. Um, and then based off, hey, she's been there twenty-five years, an extra whatever. But I think we all need to get involved in with with the.
I don't want her to get a six thousand dollar raise this year. And then a one percent next year, you know what I'm saying?
But that's what the longevity would come in.
Well, I'm not saying we had to give it off one time. What I'm saying is we need to be more persistent. And we need to, we need seven hundred longevity money. Uh, you know, if if we only give her four thousand dollars this year, you know, as long as we get in where we're staying up with the cost of living and pay longevity, I'm happy with that, you know? I I'm asking for a six thousand dollar raise this year, but I would like to see her get that much, pay her a raise and longevity, we never give her. So, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to give her a pretty good bid, just to get her above the new portion. Uh, but I'm, you know, I don't think every year we come here and give her six thousand already. I oppose that. I just think that we we do need to make the difference, and then we need to continue to keep up.
Well, let's just figure out what everybody's employees make. And see where, how far we're behind, how far we're behind. And then we can't, we'll we'll figure something out, and then we can go through the longevity on how we want to try to structure that. Because that's, that's gonna be everybody on the, on the structure of the longevity pay. So I'll do, I'll do the R and B crew. Uh, I did, what I did with the road and bridge crews, I didn't take all the, I took all the counties that are around us, not Kaufman or Smith, but have similar roads, old roads, not Kaliches or or if they weren't a unit system, if they were like us, that had, you know, four, four crews and all that. And I got Russ County, Angelina, Henderson, and Nacogdoches. And the average foreman was fifty thousand on the diet. And um the average uh crew paying was forty-five thousand and ten. And right now, Van Zan is at forty-four, eight for a foreman and thirty-eight, four for a crew. So, it's basically fifty-two hundred dollars and uh about sixty-eight hundred dollars. That's all, that's how far we're all on the road and bridge crew. Uh, and that doesn't include longevity. I mean, I've got guys been there for, one's been there for, two of them have been there for twenty years, and some of them have been there for two weeks. And the guy for two weeks is making the same as the guy for twenty years, or uh one of the guys for twenty years. And I guess we can go on to the commissioner's secretary. Uh, she makes forty thousand, forty thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars, and the average is forty-five, six, so it's five thousand. And that's where, besides you, Scott, it seems like everybody's five thousand dollars off.
So, let's talk about employees being raised. What what do you think that uh our employee should, across the board, should just get a lump sum and then start the legitimate longevity pay?
I do. I do the research online for us, and they're all like five thousand. I think five thousand will be very fair, and then we're gonna have to get a side worker. You know, I've got two brothers that have been there over ten years, and I've got one that just walked in and making almost a hundred every day.
And you have to do that because you can't get people and get them trained. They start working and then they they leave. I mean, by the time you think you, not even almost got them trained. I mean, it takes a year to get them trained. But you just start training, and I know the sheriff, I mean, it goes through that, you know, but the thing is that, you know, my chief, I feel like my chief should be making exactly the same amount as the administrative assistant for the county judge or the commissioner's office. And I fight for that every year because she is expected to come in here and, for example, what he's probate for. She handles her queue that comes in and the phone calls and whatever, okay? Then we transfer the case over to Christie. Christie looks at the case, she puts it on the docket, we come to court, judge looks at it through his queue and everything, and he goes back in his office, and to work that queue, he's expecting my chief to come in here, help him with his queue, work the queue, send it back to her queue, and have her go work her queue. I mean, that's a lot of work for her, and I think she's worth every single in. She works extra when we're doing elections. I mean, it's just, and I know everybody works more than what they're worth. I mean, that's just what it comes down to. But I think all of our chiefs should be making the same as the administrative assistant. They're worth just as much. They do as much work, if not more.
It'll cost us more in the short term to give these raises, but we're gonna save money in the long term because you're not gonna be losing them and having to retrain them.
I mean, they're looking. I'm just letting you know. I mean, they're they're looking to go elsewhere, you know, and we've always heard, well, they can go apply, if they want to make more, they can go apply to sheriff's office. That is not what they want to do. They're committed to, to me or Karen or whoever, but we have got to try to help them. I mean, I've got, it's a thing of mind. You know, just trying to make it out there.
There's nothing, like, if you know, just like the employee I just talked. We're right here, but if I took a thousand dollars less, pay her a thousand dollar less, they would just go to this market. And I wanted to get her an extra thousand. I'm not guaranteeing I'm gonna get that money back from y'all. You know what I, you know what I'm saying? However, what's gonna be in the budget
Right.
to even start her up lower, but you would start her up lower than the maximum. Right, you're gonna have to do that. You have your minimum max. We've done that in several positions. But if you're right, or if you're just want to budget, they're gonna have that money to pay her.
Man, we do that every year. We do that every year. We do that every year. We budget what the job pays. If you pay less, that's still in your budget. You can't sit there and say that. We budget, we budget the maximum of that job every year. Every year since I've been on here, we don't, just because you're paying somebody a thousand dollar less, we don't budget that job, that you're budgeted that. We budget at the maximum pay.
Well, we're not guaranteed that money back in our budget.
We budget the maximum pay of that job every year, Karen.
Okay. I'm down.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, that's, that's, we do not work our budget off of what somebody's being paid at that time. That's, that's not, that doesn't happen.
We tried to, we're trying now to to budget these things at a certain rate, and then you have that certain rate to work with. If you want to hire somebody less than what is budgeted, you can do that. But still, the the rate is so low, you you can't really uh keep somebody if if you try to structure it within what's your budget. You you have to pretty much give them the max that's budgeted to to keep them.
And you know, I've been here twenty two years, and this is really the first time I've ever experienced no application coming. I had to go to Facebook, because I had to go to the picture. Used to everybody want to come and work. But now this job got higher, it handle a lot more, and
That's what we did. We had to go to Facebook to get applications, receive some applications.
I mean, that's what's happened, is, you know, we do go for a benefit, but they're looking at what they're taking home, to what they're paying.
You've got to treat, and I've been told you can't do this, you can't do this. You've got to treat this county like it's a business, because it is. It's just like every other business with the inflation, and Sandy's nodding her head. Hear me, hear me out first. I'm talking about on salaries. You got all these other employees, these other companies that, hey, cost of living's going up, their products go up, their salaries go up, their rates go up. I mean, in order for them to stay in business, they have to keep up with the times, and I think the county does, too. I mean, you have to, or we're gonna get in a situation worse than what we're in now.
Our all the source of income for Van Zant County is our property tax.
Right.
Our property tax, we govern our electric slavery in Austin, and you go to the budget session this year, you're gonna learn why we can't just write that tax for the way we say.
No, I'm not saying raise the tax rate. I'm just saying work within our budget and see what we can do with it.
Well, we've got a three and a half C cap.
And as these values are going up, our rate has to drop every year. That's why our rates are in the three forty. They're thirty-four percent because but every, as our values rise in Van Zant County, we have to lower our tax rate because we can only produce the amount of revenue that we had last year. I have to start our budget this year. The general fund had twelve million dollars in current tax revenue. And I have to start our twenty twenty-four budget on that. And we can only go up, bring a half the chief from that. If you go over that, then you're gonna send it to the voters.
Right.
And the voters will not go past.
No. No, I'm not saying increase it, but I'm saying with the money that we got, we can make it happen. We just have to manage and budget it right.
At all. You haven't been done, but I can show you the revenue projection. We don't consider that I'm invading in this court. They're not revenue generating centers. That's a little bit rainy for us, but everyone does see the revenue drop this year. They're all why? I don't know. But when their ra- their revenue drops, when our revenue's dropping is what
Right.
So, we're not gonna be generating any more money than we get in cash. I've already got all that. Well, so we do have money in reserve to fund the salary increase. I'm not saying we don't. But I want everyone to understand why our tax rates are lower and why we we've been crippled for years, and I'm very proud that we now have a fund out that we can operate this year. I think the court prior to this did a very good job, and everyone, the elected official, the right to keep that shut on the back. Because I had it generated in my office. You will have the report next week, and I'm sure all of you can be here in the outside office doing their report. Because I found out it's a little pricey million dollars. Yes, it is, and it's because everyone of you did not spend your budget in power. I can show you exactly where the money comes from, and it's not from me, it's not from the court, it's from all of you here that worked hard to do that and did not spend the taxpayers' money. They just didn't spend it for us.
Right. And that's why I said earlier that I think the money is there.
The money is there.
Because we have to manage and budget it right.
Fund out to generate this huge raise, you cannot continue to get into that fund out, because you continue to get into eventually.
Yes, not sustainable.
And they don't.
Right.
You're the raise that you're all looking at, just without without, just for the benefits. And with every position we have budgeted now, it's nine hundred fifty thousand dollar increase. If we took our budget, it didn't change anything salary class with the issue of Florida, work, unemployment, retirement, it's it's right, it's already sitting at one hundred fifty thousand.
More.
More. The benefit paid for a foreign employee is now ten thousand dollars. And we have to look at that part of town.
Yeah, we do. We do.
When you call up candidates, they provide insurance, so that they're going to contribute to part of it.
They provide the insurance. They provide the insurance.
I mean, I'm, right, I think the employees need, and we have money. The report has often been very uh, you have to be efficient in your budget with the taxpayer.
I agree, hundred percent.
And as you get in, if you get into that budget, a million five, the bonus, salary impressive, then that extends to make an extra, pay your pay for nature, pay back into fund out. As you continue to get into fund outs, if you should all money falling down, it will be broke.
We're not gonna get there. So, that's why we're having this workshop. We've got to figure it out. How are we gonna do it?
And I know we're making a lot of money for that, so.
You're fine.
No, we appreciate you.
So uh where we're at?
I got one day I'd like to dress, you don't mind. We've been kind of busy. We had a chance to sit in here, who's the number four or any again, senior? I had Stacy, who does our HR, her office, just pull for me, uh, number four, if we had from I came over May of twenty twenty-two, I had a couple of May of twenty-one to May of twenty-two, how many people we signed, who we jailed. I came over May twenty twenty two. I had a couple of May twenty one to May twenty two. How many people we cited, people jailed. The FIs, the people that came separated, FIs, or your staff, people for your generous license, your piece of classes. So I had told that in that time period, May twenty one, May twenty two, there were twenty FIs that were generated, very far people that came and separated. We had twenty six points, two of those points cited twice in that time period, cited two jails, never changed. Paying left, paying left. During the time period, they were making annual salary of thirty three thousand dollar. Uh the number hour they work a year, that's twenty two hundred and thirty six hours, nine six hour work period. So, running that number out, where they work, uh they make about fourteen seventy six an hour. When they come in for three weeks at the O program, they go through, so you got two people basically doing one job. They shadow another boy that's working, they show them what to do, so you get two people working one job, three weeks. You're paying that person training, teaching them what to do their own job. If they lasted the three weeks, many people last the three weeks, fourteen seventy six an hour. That's a hundred and twenty eight hours of a three week period. That's not part of overtime. That's a forty eighty six and forty forty three. It's eighteen hundred and eighty nine dollars and twenty eight cents per person, then you multiply that times twenty eight. Just in salary alone for those three, for those twenty eight positions that they worked three weeks, their P O dropped out at some point after that. The cost of county fifty two thousand eight hundred ninety nine dollars. And we did the same thing with deputies. There's a fourteen week, no, fifteen. Sixteen week. And we're short now again. I think we're six patrol deputies, but we got two of the train, blow up that out. We don't lose anybody else, we back in new and staffing. But we still get the third position. We haven't been able to hire, so I've been there. Definitely fill it, third position. Yeah, so. I know, so that uh but that's that money is in budget, like you last hour also. It's not really wanna hire, you can't get people. As much as I'd like to put a step program or a longevity step program in for the toys, I think it's a great idea. I retired from the state, we had it, and it doesn't amount, it might, it's the first year to you work instead of a while. It makes a huge difference salary. That's why you're paying people long. We had a, we didn't have much turnover before, but job was incentive to keep people niche. Uh the base salary, if we want to do base salaries up, we're we're struggling. Anyway, just some numbers I ran. And uh you know, the child market around the long office, okay, or just back. The money's, money's pretty good, it was down the road, and I understand the tax side of it too. And then our options, ability to pay salary. Or continue to lose people and like, as I said, it's harder, we're not even getting the application. Call the county pays, we're not arguing what we do, and I saw them uh on top of pants and they've gone, had done with the. Shirt office logo and badge, and they're gonna take a cloth or something or something in front of Walmart over there. I mean, it's just unheard of having to take those stuff to get the application. That we're having to do. These people were coming, come seek us out, give an application, and now we're having no time. And they're doing part of it anyway. Just wanna pass those numbers on to you, and that's just the one. People that didn't believe this back, you know, from training up and. We trained some good deputies. Through the years, I've been so familiar with game when they're forwards, I've been here, we trained up some good deputies and they're working other places. Uh please, let's start from the complete volunteer, love the chiefs. They one time another, they cycle through sheriff's office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh can I touch base on on Joe? Because we also have juvenile. There, I know they get a portion, but the young portion, they gotta get raised up to the attention officer pay them, but. Otherwise, we're in both that word center day. Is crucial at this moment. If they get one, they're gone in a month. They they are much understaffed and underpaid. We have our new, that are attention party. And if we lose them, you're gonna have to get two more transport deputies, because they're gonna be taking juveniles, El Paso, wherever they go to beds. It's a vicious cycle, but they. And it's. It's got really, really bad.
I think this guy, about that actor, we did one thing, but it's a issue because of the juvenile best center. Whenever we raise their salary up, we pull. One of, one of, one of our, he's been training now to get control there, been the police academy. We pulled him over there and I think we got two more folks to sign a period, and one started today is. Outstanding for, we got people are sorry, so we're there. We got a warrant, of course, you can lead her. He's got a lot of experience, we're blessed to have him, but we didn't, we can, he came over to us because money was much better. Anyway. The salary structure there is way on a page a little different. Yeah, but you're paying your source revenue.
What, what did you say? The source of revenue you come from the state, but.
Part of it comes from the state.
We need to pick up the local part.
Yeah, they run a great facility over there, and the options is, we don't have that facility there, we have to take them somewhere else. And I don't know where they're supposed to.
There's not a lot there contracting right now because they're taking them at home, it's in a rural, you know, full. Um a lot of places to point the luck, El Paso or New York City. We're staying completely full right now, but we're also, the front office staff are having to work shifts in the back to keep the doors. Open, we're having to run shifts here. Uh and we're now three people right now. We not only get them from Vanette County, but from other counties out of Texas, we contact with the counties. So we get juveniles from all over Texas, not just Vanette County.
What do we put them?
We're only eight in that facility at our retention, so um obviously Vanette comes first, so if Allen County has been. We have to call them and pick their names up, but you know, we didn't charge for them to contract there to move us. And their their salary portion, we we gotta get them up for, we're gonna get them up. And then manage creative decisions in sheriff's office.
It just comes down to, we're all gonna put our heads together, and like Sandy said, you know, there's an X amount of dollars there, and we can't go to that. Um reserve fund, it's cuz it's not sustainable. We're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna get this money to do this. And I think we can do it, but it's, I mean, I don't think us, it's gonna take all of us to figure out how to do it. And we may have to cut on our budgets, see if we can do that, I don't know. I mean, there's, there's all sorts of ways we can do it, but we gotta figure it out.
It's like so, uh when you consider. One of the not happening, that consideration when we consider longevity is. In this first long year, it's been one year. What, what incentive can you give on the size, the people on fifty pay rates? To say that for years? And I I think one of the things you can do is strategically pay. You know, plane officers, firefighters, it's a different thing, start out at the basic. Go to an advanced, intermediate, master, grandfather, dealer. Those parts can you decide to get that set. That's, that's, that's not a long, same thing you, you did that.
We're doing that long course now.
Well, I mean, and what, what I think, that should be a avenue in the other areas too. Like in courts, you have justice court, justice court, you have level one, level two. Level three, you just, level category, justice court, we have that one level two. It's a incentive for my clerk to stay there, not just because he wants to stay there, they can't go others. Get her to go to these schools, this is particularly, and that's, you give her to protect her pay for.
I mean, we have to do classes. We don't have a choice. Texas Emory will shut us down. You know, hardly, we have to go get fingerprint and background check and then what they.
You're, you're gonna have to do that, but if it's voluntary, like level one and level two in justice court. Give, give, give that person pay for that. Because as far as it's been here, ten years, they have gone through that training. First over here, if they're twenty, they not have ever gone through that training. And she wondered why this person's ten years, like what's about west cross. Fifty bands, she went to the extra training, got extra training, got certificate, proved she wants this job. And also helps that part of the gift that. Language five, bilingual, give them the incentive, something else that could debate, best. Whatever, not just, not just being here a long time. Any reason, sir. Well, I'm saying, and I know that you do that in the sheriff's office, but I thought that should be across the board. This requires student, the stuff that's out there, state office.
I mean, for my girls, it's not, it's not required. I can let them go to the state and get their certificate from their. Yes, certificate, that's something that we do here, but by law, I don't care.
Right, but he, I don't, he's telling me to stay. And that's what, that's what I'm saying, include that, think about that, you know, incentive. And that's, that's a very training employee that you add.
I agree.
And you can keep that employee, uh on service, you know, whatever, and get training and everything, and so you're getting things inside of your. You'll be up there and then. I just think it's.
I agree.
She go with while you, I'm just consider, okay, study your another five, you're gonna be fit. But in the meantime, you can go, just clearly, what I say all, before your job. Maybe small. I just think it's. I mean, consider.
Longevity.
You have somebody over here to do the job for years, for the dumb part of the.
Yeah. Y'all wanna try to figure out longevity pay? Are we gonna do that? I got an example. Uh back. On the back of your packet, there's an example of longevity pay. That's the only one I could find. It was that, that was in that Condon just counting. But uh. I don't have a clue where you can start with that. Y'all got any ideas? Longevity pay. That should be done. This is just with the uh. Road and Bridge Department. Got any suggestions? Do what? What should your increments be? I mean, you got somebody on day one, you got somebody on day twenty. I mean, what, what should the increments be for those twenty years? And how much would it cost? If you give them a.
Well, yeah, you're talking a different point of view, you know, like your C E O thing, we all know that those are our. And all we all want one, and we had a hard time buying it, they got their name, they, you know, C E O, Marlon, so C E O. So, I think the C E O would be a big incentive for someone coming today. With that, to not give them something to watch to. Right, my patch, but. We need something that allows information on top of the regular wage. Not somewhere in between, because they did this, but on top of the wage, or see what. So I see that. That goes with longevity, but it really does, we, we got it from things we.
What was it?
Power based on what they have, that they bring to the city county, because they bring to the same one. They have a C E O, it's been standing. That's the way it was when I looked at here. I mean, when we hired somebody, when I was toward the commission's office. They didn't have a C E O, they had six months to give it. They started at a lower rate, and then when they got their C E O. Usually the commissioner given whatever their price was over there, but they didn't, they hadn't studied it in six months, they couldn't take the test and cancel. And they don't look that you give them any more, so, but, but they had to get it on their own.
So it's all.
They had to study for that, but that's not.
It is C E O, like you have it, if I see C E O or if I have it. If I say something, grab a statement.
Right. I would give them a packet. When we hired them or whatever, they got a packet, you can tell them to start saying. Your C E O. So commissioner is gonna negotiate with that with the person, but usually it would been fixed not been on the. That's changed, I don't know.
Is, the pay is so low. Now that, that if you've got an employee, you need an employee, you gotta hire an employee. At the higher rate because.
I mean, that's what happens. You hire on the day one or whether they. Many years, because you can't get people to work.
Within the base salary is so low. That's why, for our end, that's like a dress, pay first. Instead of paying longevity pay, all those things are great ideas. We don't need the base pay yet. There's not a kind of work. We're so far behind.
And that's what we kinda got into in that eight year period, we get a twenty five percent salary payout. So we went from one of the better paying jobs in accounting to one where.
Yeah, that's why we're. That's why we're in the position we're in today.
I listen, we expect more out of. Out of our deputies that work for us. I mean, and every day, I mean, you know, the state mandates. You know, different things or whatever, and it's all going to our awards, and this will pressure on our. On our people, but the money's not there to pay. We expect them to do more, and within the hours, you know, the the business hours, because you don't need them to work overtime. You don't need them to do this. There's a lot, and there's a lot more coming. There's a lot, and there's a lot more coming down.
So y'all think we just need to do this one step at a time, just work on the salaries, say for this year? And then maybe next year, okay, we got the salaries here at the baseline, now let's work on longevity pay. Just do it one, just one at a time, instead of trying to do it. I mean, because we got three months, we can just get one done this year, and then work off of that, next year, we can go longevity, look at that. And then, and move forward from there. And, uh, we can do that. Just try to get the salaries up, and then. That's what we do this year, and then next year, we work on, work on something else. That's a lot.
No, we came, y'all, certificate paid, requested it, uh, they were slap salary, we had, we had budget in house for us to go here. Wherever to do it, representative of the pack came up, we also lose longevity, we said, I need to put sheriff's office. In my understanding, this correct or wrong, we couldn't do that. As a county office, we couldn't offer that incentive, plus paying these offers, so. Their license, we couldn't do that, we couldn't call it.
Yeah, there's a, that example I got from Nacogdoches, it's got law enforcement on there, it's administration, civil process, patrol, jailer. It's got your whole thing on there.
Right, we could do a health communications operator, one, two, three, four, we can do something like that for them. For pay success, we could do it for all the employees, just for our department, it'd be county wide.
Gentlemen, if I could, uh, good partner, after you come down and apologize for being on, I'll be here, we're upstairs. We're probably about near thirty more minutes, and the girl is still going, we'll be down.
Thanks.
I, I agree, I believe our, our main focus now needs to get our salaries raised and, yeah. Uh, that, that's our, that's definitely, we, we got to get. Comparing to, talking, we need at least kind of work for us. And then know that, that we're trying to go for something to retain those people, and get heard, and get in here, and keep them a year. Then next year, they start saying, oh, now that they try out longevity, they may stay, or then create. The special other departments that do have to have certain certifications, if we could add that, is we do have to be paid for others. If there are departments that super qualified or something like that, and I agree making that payers are all ones. That haven't gotten to do that part so far, and then start with longevity.
We got a recruiting event, and all of the recruiting events, at the colleges, police academies are different places to go, job areas. To people, they have people that are looking for a job, as law enforcement officer or jailer. And walk by the table, look where our starting pay is, they walk on by and go to the next table and talk.
Joe, did you have your, uh. You got so many departments, how far we're, how far are we off, not from Kaufman County or Smith? How far are we off from the, the lot counties, on you?
It's, Melly pulled figures fourth back in January, for the deepest county around here, and they threw you. Call of the Rockwall, Smith County, you put the counties. Yeah, she pulled the high and low counties out there, and median salary range for a total of fifty-four thousand dollars. We made forty-three thousand nine hundred. So the median salary in this area, now, there's seven counties, four, they're all in our area. It's fifty-four thousand dollars, and I can assure you. That four of them, any, ten thousand dollars would be able to power that, I'll assure you that those, bigger state staff. Who's there's, but they're all in the same thing, too, the top sheriff, or Kaufman County Sheriff Bieber, and he's paying sixty-five thousand. He's bleeding people out, Kaufman, Carroll, Paul, off, they're in the seventies, and they're like, oh, they're fair, and it's all. The tax space is bigger than a bill that we're having to live in, he with them, he offered more than we are, and he loses people on top of it. Very destroying, quicker than, for the period going. And as Fred mentioned, this didn't happen overnight, this has taken place over the last fifteen years.
You can't take the rock down the road no more.
Not where it did in the road. Uh, we didn't create it, we just, we got it fixed, we're settling, we're not, we're not getting our job, they're like, they're, they're sure of us. But we got.
Karen, I don't really sell about my departments, and, so. You know, I'm in my third year of this term, and I've had some clerks come go for personal reasons, pay reasons. And, but this year is really hit pretty hard, and, and it takes so long to find. Longevity is really when it comes to, it's a helpful fact, especially when we have offices in that side of the office. To be able to get clerks that are trained enough, one of those, so, you know, our, our pay compared to other families. I've found us comparing, but I've had to think about growth that we've had in our family, even since twenties, twenty. There was a spy out the door, and I wasn't getting applications in, uh, the past thirty years, when I had a condition, but I am now. And come to find out, these people have not worked in two or three years. They, I don't know if it's COVID nine, I don't know, but, um, they haven't had any luck in standing in the past two to three years. So, I don't see another clerk, a D and B clerk in my office, something that's on a one more job. I don't get those type of people coming through the board, that are just already trying to be ready to, to go. It's from ground zero, and it takes probably about a year to train a clerk. Pretty comfortable with the process, with the state requires them to do it all. So, it is important to get these salaries up, I want to be good, qualified staff. I don't want to be hiring people from the top of the process, they're good people, but they're not good people. But I don't like handling customer service, D and B clerk position, because of. So, and I appreciate some of that right here for your research, I've done the same type of research, I have my, my fresh sheet from the pack also. And I've done a lot of research on that, so, and I'm just, I'm just proud that we've been having this discussion right now, I should root. Because we are the leaders of the county, and we need to work together, we need to communicate, what is this part, what is that part? We are voices, with citizens, we need to put our heads together and make this work out, but we can't serve in no manner. And I appreciate that, everyone, y'all.
So how far are you off, Misty?
Quite a bit. Plus paying four to fourteen eighty an hour, I mean, I would, I would like to see, you know, sixteen, seventeen. Would probably be enough to capture. A good person, see, I'm rather probably capturing everyone employed. When I go down with the salary, salary, it, so.
That's thirty-one thousand a year.
Fourteen eighty is? I don't know what's a.
The longest time that I have heard of you right now is my chief deputy, she's in her, a lot at eight years. An ex-employee would probably give this, my assistant chief deputy, Miss Laura, right at three years, and one word. Uh, she's nine and very dear, but she lost that fit, she made a year here, all the rest of my hours. Are within under three months.
I mean, our chiefs are making, as you say, and I've been here, eight years, I think I've been here almost thirteen years. And is making that plan. What the administrative assistants are making that payment after the, including. Upstairs staff coming in, and they're all making less. My staff is making less, and I say that, our chief, your chief, Karen's chief. And that's why I, I've been vying for the chief first, because I felt like our chief had the most experience. Like, we should start there, we should match what the others are making. Because they've been for so long, and guess what they do? Their staff members come to us. The Archie asking the questions, we're telling them how to do something, or what needs to be done, I mean, that's, that's what it is down to. So the experience is there, they need to be playing from what they know. They're passing down the information to the other person who came in, and they make moves. That's what, that's no sense.
I would like to, right, so in Clint hiring any staff member, I do sell the benefits, because, so you don't want to shoot people. And say, we're gonna pay a certain amount of your, your insurance. And I have a little fourteen K holidays, and we have good staff members over there, bought, and we come to them, shoot it. Those businesses do not pay the rent, they don't pay the gas, they don't pay the groceries. And that is the most important thing, um, that's one of the challenges with all these.
And I want to have people know.
Where you can't find this on, I mean, like, you're, anyone who speaks that, and, I mean, by all reason, when she made more money from where she was. And she came over here, she lost the retirement, she lost that hat, time in her life.
That's what I was gonna say, the environment, it's something I push, but a lot of people, you know, that are applying and coming in for the younger. And they think about that, and those are the ones that have executive skills, have keyboard skills, phone skills, that. They, they're, they're quick, they're alert, they're, they're learn fast. If they still have student loans, or where.
Well, I think for this year. We should just focus on the salaries. And get. If y'all can give us the information with how much. Your employees make compared to. A lot counties. We can base it off that, plus how long they've been here. And then we can get with Sandy on how much money is coming in or whatever, and then we can work off of that. And, and get something done, but we should just work, this, this, don't worry about the longevity and all that yet. Because it's gonna be hard enough just to get, it's gonna be a lot of work just to try to get this done.
Yeah, Jessica can't handle longevity and, and pay at the same time.
No.
She's.
But if y'all can get us that information, and then we'll get with Sandy and get their, her information. And then we'll try to, we'll try to make it work. And see what we can do.
With your, your county that I love.
Yeah, I got it up a tack, if you go up a tack and go to, uh, I think you're. You don't have this right here? It's in that packet. Uh. Yeah, this, of course, this is for you, not, not your employees, yeah, the county's fifty-nine thousand. Um, you'll see where, where I marked out, eight of them, that's the four high and the four low.
I didn't see the department that doesn't, all, all of your governments in here is like.
That's all I could get on tack.
Library, or IT, or ADR, none of that.
I couldn't find that on the tack, on the tack field. Like, human resources isn't on there, IT's not on there, uh. Uh, it was just elected officials that I got. And then, based off, like, I guess, could be your liaison or whatever, uh, or you, or whatever you report, so you can kind of. Get your information, or you can get, get us that information. I've got, well, we got, basically, counties is in here, but not, not.
There's, it's our study that St. Johnie had completed, and I helped that clerk with it. So that she would be completely on her structure, and I sent it to her, and turns my team position. And it, it's pretty detailed, I informed it to you, but I sent it to you, and I sent you that longevity policy, I may not have that.
You may have, I don't know.
But I'm happy to get the breakdown of the other parts, positions, work, that. Some are parts that we don't have, but there's a lot of positions that we did, and you can play a problem in the county.
Everybody was different, I mean, everybody's different in some fashion. Do what?
Our reporting is the same to the state, for example, you know, if, no matter what state is here, the vehicles numbers are very, very. We don't get that done, you know, a juvenile is not going to get any grant funding. We're gonna say, and so that falls on my staff to make up for looking at those numbers. We've reached out to comment and make sure, like, we're looking at the, so we're looking at the right numbers. You know, even Karen's staff, I know, if we, we're eight days, we have a talk, or, yeah.
That's why I think we just need to do one thing at a time.
I just, I want to say something to. Mainly, the elected officials that's been here for a while, Scott, Pat, Karen. You know, in two thousand and seven. We lowered the tax rate, five cents. Well, in two thousand and eight, what happened? The Great Depression recession occurred, let us in a hole, we, we were, we were hurting. You know, we loaned money out of our road and bridge to different. People so they could survive, the sheriff's office. And. Pound for tug, you, you remember when we had employees too, had to take a day off without pay.
They're early days.
Or low days. We did that two times in two thousand eight, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we took away. One point five percent from salaries of all our employees, including elected officials. So we're, we're trying to, trying to come back, just it took, it's taking a long time. But we're trying to get, get back where we need to be, but I just wanted to remind you the hard times.
They did those hard times.
We, we, we went through.
That was in the commission's office. That's how it ended up in the commission's office. And it was either gonna be me or another person, and then Ruthie back, and we decided she would retire, and I applied for the job.
This is a different county than when it was in two thousand and eight, and it's changing every day.
I just think the people can think that they've got all this money, and their taxes are going up, and we're getting all the money. It's not like that.
No.
I mean, that's why I didn't bring the sign out here, we were dead free. That money did not come back to revenue, and a lot of people think that.
Right.
It's been great, we could be rich, hey, that, I mean, hey, that's great. But that was just a debt, and it'd be paid off, so, I mean, the people think we've got all this money. And then, they, they don't understand how can we pay, they can go down and trick them they want.
If we don't do something, we're gonna get further and further behind.
Yeah, that's true, I mean. A little move is better than no move, to go forward. But just this little move, it's, you don't even know if that's possible, you know?
So I think we conclude, we're just gonna work on one step at a time, with salary structure only. And then, uh. We'll work through that. And, uh. Get that situated and then. We'll move on to the, the next one when we get that. But we got three months to, to figure this out. So. I think we need y'all's information. On what, you know, your employees make compared to the other counties. So we can kind of get a feel. Of what we need to do. And then see, see what we can and can't do. Would y'all agree? So.
That it?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Well, I, I've been silent. Uh, I've been learning. I've been taking notes and, uh, I have some ideas of my own. And, uh, I will put together a whole presentation on what I'm going to recommend as county judge. To help, uh, and I think you'll like it. Uh, uh, and I will announce when I will do that presentation at one. We have eight works, budget workshops set up. And I'm working on scheduling. And y'all elected officials here, come see me afterwards so we can get your time slot in for the, for the times. Uh, for you to come and make your presentations for those eight days. But, uh, I'm excited. I'm, I, and I, I want to make things right and I, but I gotta, we gotta do it. Be financially responsible in what we do so that we're not, um. Uh, putting a liability on future generations. But I think we can do, like, like Brandon said, we can do it. We can figure out a way to make it work and we're gonna do that. So, all right, with that. I, we are.
There's Marvin and it's thundering the way downstairs.
Okay, so as soon as they come in the door, we'll say we're adjourned. Actually, we will, we will wait on them to see if they have any input. Of course, I haven't heard what we've had to say, but, uh, uh, give them the opportunity. So, in that regard.
I, I want to, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Barton.
Yes.
Taking on this same brand new commissioner digging into this.
Yeah, thanks.
And then helping out.
Welcome.
We'll see how it goes. Just one thing. Is the certificate paid? Is that doable for the key, uh, constables? Whenever we address this back. We couldn't give that pay we gave.
Yes.
Use our last salary money.
It needs to be part of the budget process. Yes, it should.
We have our last salary money.
But it, it's not coming from the sheriff's department.
Okay, for the DA investigators, they couldn't do it because they're elected officials.
Right.
But that would be possible. Cause I have nothing else to say about them. We didn't have them out here helping us. We'd really be in trouble.
Mm-hmm.
You get four solid constables, do a good job for you. Thank you.
I think that was part of, since, I mean, you saw on that thing that they're the lowest one. But if you add that certificate pay to them. They're right up there. Um. With everybody.
It's incentive also to finish that. Your training out. To get that advanced certificate. There's four level certificate. More training you get.
Yeah.
You have to get it. Thank you.
I agree with you. And our, our constables. Do a whole lot more than start paying work and go to the board, that's like that.
Yes, they do.
They're active, they're. They're everywhere.
They're everywhere.
Where are they coming from? They may have stopped for ice cream. They're doing a plea deal.
The elevator.
That might be a first. I never seen a word.
You what?
I do. I'm working on right here. We got, uh, the sheriff. So we got, uh, Monday, Thursday, the twenty second. Uh. What's a good day?
Thursday could be good. What's, what's your schedule?
Uh, nine, uh, we're doing thirty, I have thirty minute increments. Nine AM start time to, uh, noon.
This is, this is gonna be denying.
Not right there? Yeah. All right. All right.
Is that just what we're on our budget?
Yes.
About fifteen minutes.
You bet.
And leaving like, I'm you now. We want to hear what you have said.
We, we have, kind of, we have concluded, but we wanted to wait to see if you had any input. Even though you don't know what we've. What we've talked about.
I really don't know, really, I don't know what has been said or hasn't been said. I don't want to repeat anything.
Well, the, the, the summary of is we want to get the salaries up, updated or, uh. Up to market. Everybody's. That's, that's the bottom line. And, and we will work on other, uh, incentives such as longevity pay and, uh, next year. Now, it's been one step at a time is. Am I summarizing that correctly? Okay, I just want to make sure. So.
Did you all just show specific sort of plan for this year or? Yeah, without this target, it would be one hand. It would be elected.
We gotta look at the money too. See what's there.
Yes, thanks, guys.
Pat, the, the, the constables want to do a presentation jointly or individually for the budget?
Join, I mean, uh, yeah, join all of us, yeah.
Okay, then, uh. I'll send you the dates.
Okay.
Okay, keep back. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you. Figure it out. Do, do what? No, 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 not at all. Uh, minimum thirty minutes. You know, there, there are thirty minute increments, so just kind of fill out what works best. Mr., we, uh.
Yeah.
We being, Christie and I did not realize or did not remember my case about the, the meeting this afternoon. And I have scheduled probate cases from two PM until three. So I can do them in my office and y'all can have your meeting here. Okay, but I will not be present now because I didn't, I didn't remember it. Christie didn't know that, so. You got Judge Virgil. Good Virgil. So.
I think that would all right.
Good. Very well. Thank you for doing that.
I realized it would be, I knew it was. There's no way we can get it all done. Yes, I got it. I've already got it written down. Goodness, like you. You bet.
Thanks.
All right. I got y'all here. What, uh? Do y'all have a specific date you'd be interested in having the road and bridge?
Not the twenty nine, thirty.
Right, you'll be gone those two days. Okay, so, uh. What I'm doing is I'm holding off scheduling anything July sixth and seventh. For any that need to roll over. And. Here I got, I got one I had. How long you need? An hour. All right.
But then everybody's gonna be tagging stuff on them, I believe, so.
Well, there's, let's do that. I need to follow it. That's what this, these are for, our follow up days. But I'm not scheduling them initially, but there'll be follow ups, so, so, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
That's what always happens. Everybody knows. But they don't.
All right, how about Monday to twenty six? No, hurdles out. You're up tonight, so really the only thing we can do is July. Six or seven. Which is two days, so. I'm gonna put, um. I'm gonna just reserve us for Thursday, July sixth. As R and B and road and bridge for the entire time. And, uh, the other thing that I have, I may already get them thinking up is. I've got floaters, voter, uh, departments, like all the ones I operate or I'm responsible for. That I'm not gonna schedule, but rather wait until if we get done early with somebody, so you got spare time, I can throw it in there. Right there, make use of our time. Just missing. You can, if you like. Uh, how about, uh, Thursday to twenty second? June. Okay. How about Monday to twenty six? Or does that give you enough time? Friday, the third, I'll send you the, the dates and I'll let you. Okay, all right.
Brandon Martin, nice to meet you. What's your department? Of course, you go. All right. I've never been there. Let's forget it, I guess I.
I will do that. All right.
Up there on the, on language, on highway.
Todd McCain. Yeah, she would have known him. If he would have, was gonna come, he would probably come the third. So, are we still recording? We're, we're always recording, all right. Thank you, uh, hi mom. We're always recording. Yes, well, who's gonna be the point man? I was gonna send, uh.